We all set?
All right. With that, we will start our special meeting for the Selma City Council on January 11, 2022 at 5:00 PM in the Selma City Council chambers. And this is consistent with AB 361 and Government Code Section 54953. This meeting will be held remotely. Members of the public may access the meeting using the teleconference phone number 1301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 867-0551-9459. Happy New Year, everybody. It's good to see everybody again. And with that, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Garrett?
Here.
Councilmember Menjoz Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may announce the item now and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. If anybody would like to make a comment tonight. If anybody on the phone or online would like to weigh in on oral communications.
As a reminder to those online, please use your raise your hand feature and we will add you with the meeting queue. Apologies, I forgot the statement. Mayor Robertson, we have no callers with their hands raised at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to regular business, which will consist of preliminary review of potential infrastructure funding sources. Consider approval of Rockwell Pond Park conceptual design and preliminary phase cost estimate. And consider dates for special meeting workshop in early February for an in-depth discussion on infrastructure needs and potential funding sources. City manager.
I can't hear him.
There it goes. How about now, councilmember?
Yeah, yes, I can.
Okay. And what I was saying, councilmember Trujillo, was before we jump into the discussion about the park phasing and the concept design, I wanted to discuss the park relative to the city's overall infrastructure and public facility needs and kind of address the project from a perspective of the community-wide needs and funding ability for these types of facilities. So if you could just bear with me, I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation that I put together. So I think it's really important to distinguish between our infrastructure needs and our public facility needs, which the city of Selma has both. The way that I would distinguish infrastructure from public facilities is that infrastructure is what is necessary to support and encourage housing and commercial development. So it's an investment that either the city or the developers pay back over time as more development occurs. And then the local property and sales tax expands as a result of that additional development. You know, this infrastructure, I think most of us are familiar with sewer and wastewater treatment, water lines, streets, stormwater drains and pipelines, retention ponds and more. Public facilities are not typically a prerequisite for growth, for development. They usually come as growth happens to be able to serve the population as a result of that additional growth. So, you know, when we talk about public facilities, we talk about parks, fire police stations, community centers and more. And public facilities generally are funded by the government or by developers by way of development impact fees. As is the case with infrastructure, you know, we have development impact fees to pay for infrastructure upgrades. And the public agencies can also pay for the infrastructure themselves. So just to kind of summarize that difference, the infrastructure is basically what is needed to build homes, to build commercial developments. You can't have homes and commercial developments without that infrastructure, whereas public facilities are not required for those developments. They come sort of as added amenities to support, to provide services to those residents. And then, so we talked about what kind of infrastructure needs are needed here in Selma. Sewer, stormwater collection and retention, those are the two major ones at the moment, the streets, roads and water. And then our public facility needs, we have a fire station that we need to build to improve our response times and accommodate our growing ambulance service. We have parks and open space that we're looking to address with the Rockwell Pond Project. Community centers is also something that we've discussed to be able to serve the community. And the police station, we completed that in 2020 and it's up and running and serving the community well. And then schools, which the city doesn't typically see as a public facility that the city is responsible for, but we are participants in the planning for school facilities because we need to assist with, assist the school district with locating those facilities and zoning that land appropriately or planning that land, that use appropriately. And keep in mind, this is a preliminary discussion. I didn't mention this at the beginning, but I anticipate that we'll go deeper into this type of discussion down the line when we have more stakeholders in the room, like developers and other folks who are responsible for development. So just to kind of go into what our current sewer infrastructure needs are, we have Clarkson Lift Station, which I think some of us, you know, heard was a need during the development workshop that we had on November 12. That lift station is currently at capacity and upgrade to that would support all development west of Highway 99 and south of Rose Avenue. So quite a few projects that are hinging on an upgrade to Clarkson Lift Station. The estimated cost according to SKF is $2.9 million. And the reason that that's important is because it's at capacity. So whoever wants to build now in that area has to pay that $3 million to upgrade it and then hope that any future development is reimbursed back to that developer. So they essentially have to carry this financing with the risk that nothing ever develops after them. And so they pay these $3 million for, you know, let's say a 20-unit apartment complex or whatever it is. Our other needs are the Northwest Sewer that would support Selma Grove, any development at Floral, Stillman, Nebraska and Highway 43. That estimated cost is 6.24 million. We have the Amberwood Trunk Line, which most of us are familiar with the need there. The estimated cost is about 4 million. That could change. I think they're out to bid again for an updated cost, but that was the last cost estimate that the developer received. And that would serve the Lennar subdivision and future builders at the Amberwood area or specific plan area. We also have the Dinuba Line, which would serve the KB Homes and Raven Projects along Dinuba from Golden State, basically all the way to Orange, maybe even further east. And that estimated cost, according to a recent bid, was $6.5 million for both phases of that development, about 335 homes. And we have the Rose Lift Station and upgrades at the Nebraska to Nebraska Sewer Lines. We have $2.4 million estimated cost. And so we have actually two multifamily projects that would depend on these upgrades right now. Think we would be looking at about close, over 200 apartment units that would be built. And those also depend on the Clarkson Lift Station as well. So currently, we're seeking budget earmarks for state and federal, at the state and federal level for sewer projects. Right now is when the state budget process is underway. The government released the initial draft and, you know, so they're getting a lot of requests from all around the state for earmarks and things of that nature. The federal budget process is going to take a little longer. They don't typically look to adopt until October and usually goes longer than that. In general, you know, we expect housing developers to bear the greatest share of the cost. And that's typically the case here in California, but we also have to remember that these costs are likely passed on to the purchasers of those homes, the renters of those apartment units. So reduces affordability and that's something that we heard at the development workshop, you know, from KB and other builders. So something to keep in mind while developers do pay that cost for the most part of upgrades and new infrastructure, a lot of times that cost is passed along to the end user. So from that perspective, from an investment perspective, the upgrading of sewer infrastructure would provide the highest return on the city's investment. You know, if we update our impact fees, infrastructure investments would pay for themselves over the long run and will facilitate housing, commercial and new parks and public facility development. New development would generate impact fees for future parks and additional infrastructure and would expand the city's tax base and provide more revenue to the general fund for services and programs. So you build the infrastructure and you start seeing the development that supports the public facilities like the parks, like the community centers, fire stations. So there has to be that backbone, that spark to generate that new development. And so at this time, the single biggest roadblock to development in West Selma, in those boundaries, west of the 99 and south of Rose, that includes the crossings, it includes several multifamily projects, it includes Baldev Joe San's multifamily project and commercial project, Mr. Heinley's 160-unit subdivision. So quite a few projects that depend on the Clarkson. And currently at max capacity at a cost of $2.9 million for that upgrade. And it's really at a point where either developers who have projects ready are asking themselves, do I want to be the one to bite the bullet on this, to take the leap and pay for this upgrade? And not, you know, expect any return for a while on that. So we also have infrastructure needs in terms of streets and roads. We talked about Stillman Street Development, which was an idea brought forth by Mr. Nelson. That's something that would improve floral avenue circulation. It would promote economic development in West Selma. And currently, we actually don't have a cost estimate from that or for that project. It's kind of conceptual at this time, but we do know that it would involve right-of-way acquisition. So we'd have to purchase right-of-way to extend Stillman to DeWolff presumably. And then we also have the new fire station as a public facility need, which the estimated cost, according to, you know, my conversations with Chief Peterson is $10 to $12 million. And currently, we have about $4 million, maybe three and a half million available for the project, which is a good amount to start the project. And the funds that we would, the sources that we would be using for that would be the ambulance fund, the IGT program, which we estimate about $1 million in revenue every year, potentially more. So it could, if we didn't want to finance this facility through a loan or some other mechanism, it would take several years to build up the money to do that. But that is one where we would be able to generate the revenue to support any debt service on. And we're also currently seeking budget earmarks at the state and federal level for this project as well. And that brings us to parks and open space, the most prominent being Rockwell Pond Park. And we'll see in our next presentation, the Phase 1 cost is $16.2 million. And that's just to meet the minimum requirements of the Prop 68 grant. So this is absolutely needed to accommodate youth soccer leagues and other sports. If it's adjacent to commercial development, like Selma Grove, which it is, Rockwell Park would have economic development benefits as well, which is not typical of a park. You don't see a park generating substantial economic development benefits unless it's, you know, a stadium or something like that. So there is that benefit. However, we do have restrictions on the property due to the property having been acquired by tax-exempt bonds. And so there are certain things that we can do and cannot do to generate revenue on that property. I think everyone is familiar with those restrictions in concept. So if we if we move forward with the park, this is just, you know, for council to keep in mind, operations would have to be subsidized by general fund dollars unless the maintenance, there's a maintenance agreement that is made with adjacent commercial property owners. So, you know, we would probably have discussions with Selma Grove, the foreigners about if this is generating economic development benefits for them, is there any possibility that we could enter into maintenance agreement with them? I don't know if that's something that's been discussed in the past, but it's certainly something to explore. Impact fees from housing development could potentially support debt service on any loans used to build the park. So if we see new development as a result of, let's say, the Dinuba Sewer Line going in or Amberwood Trunk Line going in, we could potentially see some impact fees that we could use to pay off any debt that we use to build this park. But that assumes that the infrastructure is built first to support that development. Otherwise, we're looking at paying for the park with existing general fund revenues without growing our tax base first to support any new debt service that we would be taking on. And then future parks, besides Rockwell Pond Park, we have, you know, our general plan policies currently call for actually five acres per 1,000 residents for any new subdivisions. The minimum is, per the Quimby Act in California that was passed in the 70s, is three acres per 1,000 residents. We haven't held developers to that standard in the past. We had very low park impact fees and so we weren't collecting enough to build parks. And we weren't, and we weren't making the developers build their parks and build their own parks. So we ended up with no parks and not enough money to build our parks themselves. So we certainly addressed the impact fee issue by raising it a few years ago. And now it stands at about $7,000 per housing unit, which is very substantial and could generate a good amount of impact fees to build a new facility like Rockwell Pond Park. But going forward, we would like to see developers pay to build their own parks to serve the neighborhoods that they're building. Because if, even if we collect impact fees, the city still has to purchase the land. We have to pay prevailing wages to build the parks and a bunch of other things that we have to consider as a government agency. So ideally, the developers would pay for it themselves. And so what are the potential funding options that we have for our infrastructure and public facility needs? We have $2.97 million that we've received from the federal government as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Incidentally, that's equivalent to the cost of upgrading the Clarkson Lift Station. And we're due another $2.97 sometime in July or August to complete the $5.94 million allocation for ARPA. So all in all, we'll have about $6 million total from ARPA. And we have confirmed with our finance director that sewer infrastructure, public facilities like parks are allowed expenses because there is an interim rule that has been issued by the IRS on how we can spend this money. They haven't issued the final, final rule, but in the meantime, if we're looking to spend the money, we would use the interim final rule. And we can delve into that when we have a deeper discussion about ARPA and how to allocate those funds. The California Infrastructure and Economic Development Bank is a very interesting prospect that we're currently holding discussions with. So it's a revolving loan fund. It's a bank that is part of the state and its only purpose, one of its purposes is to provide loans for infrastructure and economic development purposes to public agencies. And so through their revolving loan fund, they can give up to, or they can loan up to $25 million for infrastructure projects like sewer, streets, fire stations and parks. And what they have seen in recent fundings is an interest rate for creditworthy agencies at 2.5% to 3%, which is historically low. Normally, what you would see, and not just for revolving loan funds, but for bonds and, you know, general obligation bonds, you know, you can see 7% to 9% interest rates on those kinds of financing options. So that's definitely something that we're taking a hard look at and the benefit to that funding source is that they can fund that. If, once they have a complete application within 90 days, so they can turn it around pretty quickly. It most likely would take closer to six months, but it's still much quicker than most other funding sources for this amount of money. Then we're also having discussions with consultants and strategic advisors about the possibility of community financing districts and infrastructure and revitalizing financing districts. You'll notice I don't mention EIFDs because that's currently not an option for us. It might be two to three years, maybe more, before that does become an option for us and we're hopeful that eventually it will. But for the time being, these are the tax increment financing districts that we would have available to us. The only downside, and this is how it differs from EIFDs, and one of the ways it differs is that it requires a two-thirds votes by residents. So this is currently what KB Homes is looking at doing to fund sewer infrastructure. But there are conduit financiers out there that would package different projects, let's say Amberwood, KB, you know, and other housing developments into one single bond issuance to pay for all of those projects with one single bond issuance. So there are options to kind of package everything together. So we also have, we've been in discussions with Clean Water State Revolving Fund as of late last month. And we got some encouraging news in terms of what Selma could potentially qualify for as a severely disadvantaged community in terms of our median household income and those kinds of demographics that the state looks at. We would potentially qualify for low interest or forgivable loans. And because they are receiving, the state is receiving money from the federal infrastructure bill that was passed last year, they're going to be able to do a lot more with that revolving fund and fund a lot more projects and a lot more different types of projects, which bodes well for Selma. The only downside is that this is not a short-term solution. I used the state revolving fund in another community for a water transmission line project and it took five years to break ground on a project from start to finish. So, and I did confirm that in our discussions, they do anticipate a three- to five-year funding horizon for this loan program. But it is, if we plan accordingly, I think we can definitely leverage it, you know, for some really major projects. We had a discussion last week with the Economic Development Administration. They are definitely in favor of funding a project in Selma as long as we have commitments from businesses to to develop here. And so what we were looking at the EDA grant for was for Selma Grove, for the Jasan Project, any development at the Super Walmart property, the 40 acres there, south of Floral and potentially Stillman. The magic number, I think, is about 145 jobs. If we can come to them with written commitments from If we can come to them with written commitments from businesses saying, we will build here if the sewer line goes in, that's funded by the EDA, they would fund it. You know, you have other requirements like environmental and NEPA and CECL and all those kinds of things. But, and it also requires a fifty percent match. We could use state funds for that match, but not the ARPA funds that we currently have available because you'd be using federal money to match more federal money. And then we also have the impact fees that we correct or collect, which for sewer and other purposes is not sufficient to cover the cost of the upgrades. I was having this discussion with a major developer who owns a significant amount of property in town. And, you know, looking at our Nexus study from two thousand and fifteen where our current fee schedule was adopted, there are some major sewer projects that were not included in that study. So our fees at that time did not account for these major upgrades that we need now, so they were too low. So we would probably look at funding a new impact fee study to get those to where they need to be to fund our long-term sewer improvements. And keep in mind, I mean, we could potentially use, as more development happens and developers are paying into these impact fee funds, we would be able to use those impact fees to service debt that was used to install the infrastructure. The developers would essentially be buying into this infrastructure that the city put in itself. And so, but that all has to be part of the study, et cetera. And so, you know, just to conclude, from a staff perspective, to be able to generate enough revenue to support public facilities and growth and housing and commercial development, we would best be served by investing in infrastructure first, like our sewer, storm drains, streets, and water. However, it doesn't mean that infrastructure and public facilities could not be funded at the same time or simultaneously through the I-Bank because they're willing to fund multiple projects with one loan. And not just the I-Bank, there's other mechanisms. Of course, we have to first get approved by the I-Bank and go through the preliminary financial process, financial review. If the park is funded first, if the council decides to move forward with the park project, and it doesn't have to be tonight, it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, the city would need to ensure that we have the general fund revenue to service any debt that is issued to pay for the park. And then make sure that we have, you know, the revenue to support the ongoing maintenance of the park. Something to think about. And I know the council has considered these things before. So we're currently working with strategic advisors, government affairs consultants, financial consultants, and really the development general, development community at large to really create a comprehensive funding plan for Selma's infrastructure and public facility needs because we need both. We don't just need infrastructure, we need public facilities as well. And so that's something that we have to, and I have item three on the agenda to schedule a discussion where we bring these developers together to talk about, you know, if the city's going to make a certain investment, if the city decides to go that route, what can we expect from the developers in terms of public facilities and additional infrastructures to support development? And so that's my last bullet point. So we'll be, after the item number two, where we talk about the phasing and the concept of the park, I would like the council to consider a date in early February, first week of February, to have this discussion about development and infrastructure funding specifically. Any questions?
Yeah, could we get that emailed to us, Fernando?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Fernando, just some clarification in regards to the I-Bank loan. You stated they would fund thirty-five million?
Twenty-five million, twenty-five.
Okay. Twenty-five million, now would that be at a locked rate? Or is it an adjustable rate?
They fund fixed rates for up to thirty years. So the life of the assets have to be at least thirty years. And a park and sewer infrastructure would definitely qualify for that.
Is there any penalties if you pay off the loan sooner?
No, there are no prepayment penalties.
Anybody else have any questions before we move on to item two? Yep, we'll move on to item two. So for item two, I'd like to hand it over to our consultant, our design consultant, RRM Design Group, and specifically Lance Worsham. Go ahead, Lance.
Happy New Year. Thank you for having us back and thank you for the special meeting. Open up the PowerPoint.
Yes, apologies.
So on December sixth, we presented the full concept plan with everything in one large budget, and that included the amenities that we heard from the community. Heard from you to separate that out with an itemized list, so you have that, and then to look at a phased approach. And so we met with staff, looked at the phasing, what would be required, and look at what would be included in phase one for what is required by the grant. And then phase two would be what would be included as required, and then phase three is the heard from the community that they wanted, but we didn't quite design into the schematic. There with the concept plan, we could move on. Before, we had twenty-four point five million was the total price of the in the next slide. We'll sit here for a little bit. Looking at what the grant requirements are, there's a lot of amenities in there. You're getting the five soccer fields, the playground, the splash pad, parking lot, basketball fields, restroom. Looked at, with staff and I, we looked at what other areas of the park can we out and just be a future phase? So that includes kind of the perimeter landscaping, so that would most likely be additional trees. Nice boundary of the park, and then the picnic shelter that's kind of on the overlook at the point, the southern there. And then the eastern parking lot. So we took all of that out of the total park, and we call that phase two. With that, we also include that land bridge that goes over to Selma Grove. But also those two spots kind of in the center there, that's kind of the expanded playground. So phase one would build a more modest playground, phase two would enhance the playground with more amenities, more dynamic play equipment that would be more items that would just make that playground larger than it would be in phase. Phase three is that five-acre parcel to the west side there. But in addition to that, it's the pickleball courts, the dog park, fitness stations, those types of things. So I don't have that color shown on the map, but we have to plan for where those are going to be. And so we would need to go back to this concept plan and hit those in where we think they're appropriate. So we haven't got that far yet because we need the direction from council. What is in the phasing? So I'll show you the next few slides. Or do you have a question?
Yes, sorry, Lance. I would add that there potentially could be a phase four. And I think Mr. Cliff Totilian is on the line because we talked about the economic development impact of the park, and that's going to be maximized if at some point there's that connector part of the park that's built between the Selma Grove development and Rockwell Pond Park. That's not currently part of this project because we are focusing on the twenty-eight acres, but Mr. Totilian is still very much interested in moving forward with that connector piece. And so it's not, we're trying to work with Mr. Totilian so that, to develop a concept for that while not holding up the process for this twenty-eight acres that were required to build by two thousand and twenty-four.
Just a quick question at this point. Are these target numbers that could potentially change? Because this is an open bidding process, there could be contractors that come in and bid on this significantly lower, unfortunately significantly higher.
Yes, that is, these numbers, these numbers are what our consultants estimate the bids would come in at. They could come in a lot different than this.
Real quick question. Everything that's in yellow, that is what's required for the grant that we received.
Okay, so then the breakdown of what these phases look like in costs, the phase one is sixteen million. So that does include the majority of the twenty-eight acre development of the park at nine million. Direct and hard and soft cost, about four and a half million. Does include the two million in the DeWolke improvements. We are including that cost in phase one. I have the, kind of the itemized list here on the right. That's everything we see as being included in phase one development.
The offsite does not include the sewer, though. The lift station, is that correct?
All right, I believe the sewer, the lift station is an onsite cost as part of the development, park development cost.
Did the nine and a half million?
Correct.
Yeah, you're correct, sorry.
And that's, and about roughly, how much is that?
I think we
Is it the whole Clarkson lift station?
No, this, this development would not be impacted by Clarkson. The lift station would be on the property itself that we would have to install.
It's a whole new one. I think we were on the same
Yeah, Jerry, is that correct that we would put in a lift station to support the sewer on this property?
Yes, that is correct. You required a lift station due to the length of the connection for the sewer line, correct.
But you didn't include that in your earlier analysis because it's part of the park.
Yes, it's specific to this project, yep.
Sorry, quick, quick question. Will it, will that lift station be usable for any other development around there? Say homes come in down the line, subdivisions come in, more commercial around the park, Selma Grove, will they be able to use that?
That's a good question, and I would defer to our engineers about that. Jerry, do you know if that, if that lift station would be sufficient to support any other development surrounding that area?
That is also a good question. That need to be confirmed by RRM, but I believe we only accounted for the park usage in our estimate. We didn't include any other development tying into that sewer line.
You could expand the capacity of it, like we're looking at the other lift stations, and the folks who are going to benefit from it would probably have to pay for that, right?
Sure, and it would have to be development that is upstream, I believe upstream from that development. So it's just, it depends on the location of the lift station to, as far as what else could tie into it.
Again, here we go, you know, we've got to make sure that we have enough capacity so we don't run into any issues in the future for future development. Because if we're going to do it, we've got to do it right now.
That's what Selma's been up against for years and years, just not having enough money to do it, to take account of that future development, and look where it gets us.
So I mean, so as our engineers design the park and the services and utilities to it, if we knew what the assumptions were of what other uses were coming in later, we could upsize that as we develop the park. It's there and the infrastructure is ready for it, then you just tie into it later. I went through this one. I just wanted to reiterate, again, like I said, this one has, this phase one has more of a modest playground. So it would, we would plan it with all abilities, inclusive playground equipment. But what I did from the, from the original one is took about three hundred thousand, it's six hundred thousand total budget for the playground. I put three thousand and, three hundred thousand here and three hundred thousand in there. fluctuate that too, but that would give you a really nice playground to begin with, but then you could add a really nice playground, so the full
For all abilities, specialties, is that right, everyone?
So here, we included the land bridge in phase two. Again, we could look at putting that into phase three, if that's something we want to look at. And then the full development of the park, which includes that enhanced playground surfacing and playground fencing, the lookout hill, ended pathways, and then additional picnic shelters in the east parking lot. Then enhanced landscaping and then parking lot lighting for that east parking lot. That's all in that full development of park, that three million dollars. Have your direct and hard cost and the total budget for phase. Now, the cost of this might all change depending on when this gets built. So that's kind of what you need to know, is if this is in ten years, all these prices are going to be different, and it'll be more that's the fact that we don't know how to really figure out the cost on that at this point. Move on to phase three. So phase three, which, like I said, is not designed in the concept plan yet, but what we heard from the community that they were interested in was the dog park, dirty fencing around the whole perimeter of the park, fitness stations and surfacing and pickleball courts with lighting. Kind of mixed in some additional site furnishings in there so that you have some site furnishings next to the pickleball court and the dog park, so that you'll see that there. And then sports lighting for the three additional fields. We included builds that are lighted per our grant requirement in phase one. Free fields getting lit. And then improvements to the five-acre site, which is technically just like site grading so that it could be overflow parking. No amenities designed for that five acres, it's just for overflow parking. This is about three point three million.
Ask a question? Okay. On phase one, phase one is what we need to do to get this complete before the deadline in two years, is that correct?
Correct, by March twenty twenty-four.
So I have a question, a follow-up question to that. So once we're completed in the phase one, and we have, you know, met the requirements of the grant, phase two and phase three, we could typically do, add other things, right? Like if we needed, if we wanted to add, what is it, the sports complex, you know, other amenities there that we could charge for, then we can do that, and we won't be restricted to anything, correct?
Have to be careful. The grant is designed for open park for community use. So to answer your question, we can add anything else we want to the park, we can add more acres to the park. We just have to be careful if we start charging. Might be able to reserve a soccer and charge for that, but we have to keep the playground, pickleball courts open to the general public.
So then essentially, that other additional property that we may want to build something different would still fall in the restrictions because of the proximity?
Our only restriction would be the tobacco mission from the county on any other acres. The grant, we could build a sports complex there, we could put anything we want, acres. It wouldn't fall into the same guidelines as the grant.
Okay, yeah, and that was more my question was, can we, yeah, can we build something more to attract in that area, get that revenue, you know, still have the attraction to the park and still provide everything else that we need, so, okay, thank you.
I did want to add something to your question. I did wanna add something to your question, um, or Mendoza Navarro, yeah. Alright, okay, um, thank you. What, what we would intend to do here is, is develop construction documents so that a contractor could bid all three of these phases at, at some time, right? But if you wanna go back in the phase two, if you wanna build that in ten years, but you wanna add something different to it, then you'd need to go back and do new construction documents and a whole new design package so the contractor could bid that project.
Well, the complex was not included, and these bids are just based on these phases here on this information.
A community center would require new, new plans, new machinery.
Other questions?
Do we have any questions from anyone here tonight? Anyone online, anyone on the phone? Can you stand up and say your name please and speak in the mic? No, no, can you speak in the mic, go on the record, thank you so much. That's good.
My question is, just what?
Could you identify yourself too, please?
That one, Tiberos. What's the grace period?
Think that no laws change that would require something more strict to be designed. Get new permits that are current, and then it could be.
Do you normally know how long the perm, the permits go for, I mean, is it like a one year, sixty days?
Yes, uh, sorry, I can answer that, so generally speaking, our um, building permits for, you know, residential projects are, you know, six months and then they can be renewed. As long as the uh, the applicant of the permit shows progress uh on the project, but it can be extended pretty much indefinitely. Um, as long as we're able to, it depends on our um, our municipal code too, I mean, and we can also, if it's a site plan review, we can put different conditions on it that don't apply to other projects, so it could be different timelines.
I'll also add that typically the city is either through the planning commissioner or the city council that approves extensions. So gives the, gives this body a considerable decision-making authority in that regard.
We have anybody online or on the phone that would like to say anything?
As a reminder to the callers on the line, please use the raise your hand feature and we will add you to the meeting queue. Mayor Robertson, I see no hands raised at this time.
But with that, I think tonight, we're here, the action that you're looking for from us tonight is whether or not to continue with the design and development plan that we have before us, is that correct? And did you wanna vote on that tonight?
Well, you know, um, that would be if the council is inclined to, to approve moving forward with the, with the construction plans, that's certainly within your power to do so. Uh, however, I would say my recommendation, which is a little bit different than what's in the staff report, is to um table the decision until we have a, a deeper discussion on, on the funding options, until those options are a little bit clear, because I'm assuming that that would drive your decision on whether to continue to move forward with the construction plans, but that is completely the council's decision.
So the question I have is, what is, what are our time constraints at this point? How long do we have to make that decision without missing the deadline and having to return the money? Or, related question, is, is the state going to grant a, an extension because of COVID, does that look pretty likely?
Well, um, the conversations I've had with people who have spoken to people at the state are that um, they are considering that option, but it's not something that I would recommend, you know, hanging our hat on. I think we are running up against the crunch in terms of starting the project and the, and the construction plans. And our consultants would, would say also that the longer, every month that we delay, you know, the more expensive the project is gonna get. However, I know that ultimately um to make a, a good financial decision um in terms of funding for the city, I think we need to know what all of our options are and um whether any source, funding sources that are available to us are actually, you know, within our reach and it, it's something that the city, you know, would want to, to pursue. But, yeah, I mean, we are, we're getting pretty close to, to crunch time here, to answer your question.
How quickly could you, um, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna ask, how quickly will you find out or will you know when we're gonna get the funding sources? Cause that's gonna be start our next.
Yeah, well, it depends on what funding sources the ci- the city council would want to pursue, I mean, we, you know, the, we have the ARPA funds, half of the ARPA funds right now. But as I mentioned in my presentation, I mean, we can use that a lot of different ways, including infrastructure. I mean, if we used even the six million dollars right now, that still wouldn't get us, you know, phase one of the park. But also, you know, when we're going through the financial analysis with, with IBank, their timeframe was two to four weeks to even let us know whether we're eligible for funding on the park and, and any sewer upgrades or anything like that, so. I mean, I think any, we would probably be looking at at least at another month um till we go that route, so.
Is this project even conceivable without the IBank funds?
Well, in terms of what's out there, the, the only other options to fund would be grants, right? If we don't issue bonds or if we don't get a loan, we would have to pursue grants, and there's only so many grants out there from the state. I mean, we're looking at the land and water conservation grant, which would potentially fund the acquisition of the property. But really, we have not seen any other grants out there that we could leverage to fund the park. I would say IBank or some sort of bond or other loan are, in the short term are, are only options at the moment, because we don't have enough in development impact fees.
So what I'm hearing, city manager, is we have to get this funding concrete, we gotta know we have it before we could even consider moving forward.
Correct, unless we decide to bank on the fact that um, you know, the state could extend the deadline. I know we've been talking to some strategic advisors about, and I forgot to mention um, state earmarks and federal earmarks are also on the table, but nobody's gonna, you know, fund, you know, eight million dollars for a park as an earmark, we might get two million, three million. However, if we have more time, let's say we didn't have, let's say we didn't have the grant as a restriction, we would have more time to sort of master plan that area and then seek funding for a, a master planned area that includes a twenty eight acre park and housing and infrastructure and streets. But it has to be all part of a package rather than a standalone public facility. Um, and that's, you know, that would be the advantage of not having a, a time restriction like the grant. Um, but again, you know, on the other hand, you have four and a half million dollars in hand right now. Do we wanna give that back, you know, for a project that we, we know we want to build? Or do we put the infrastructure in first using the ARPA funds, for example, just as a, you know, for argument's sake? And let that new development that comes in as a result of the infrastructure pay for the park over time?
We've been kicking that can down the road a long time in Selma, since nineteen eighty nine on the new park, hoping for just that development. And you were talking about the impact fees that have to be looked at again and how they didn't take account of some of the, some of the sewer infrastructure, you know why? Because the impact fees around that area, which is where Starbucks went in, they were so high, the development fees, no one would develop it. So the city had to come in and change those and they can't just do it, say, hey, just lower the fees or you get sued, right? Potentially, you have to make a study out of it, and that's what the city did in two thousand and fifteen or fourteen, I believe you referenced. And as a result, those impact fees and development fees went way down out there. And Starbucks was able to come in, which we didn't have before in that whole area that you see out there around, around Walmart. So, and it's all because of limited funds, right? You know, because there were impact fees that were too high, developers who wouldn't pay it. And it's just the eternal conflict between available funds and having something built the right way, being able to take account of future growth. So that's a, that's one of the concern of mine is, if we do move this down the road and just forfeit the four and a half million dollars, there's no guarantee we'll ever get the four and a half million again. And um, you know, we don't know when we'll be in a situation where we, we do have the, all these products that, all these elements, you know, the public structure and the facilities that come together like we have sort of right now in this park. We don't know if that kaleidoscope will, will come together and, and how soon, whereas we have at least a chance at it right now, getting something done.
No, absolutely, and I, I would say that, I mean, I don't know what other options the city has looked at in the past. But um, financing through, you know, an, an organization like the IBank or even um, infrastructure financing districts where you get different projects, private developments into a single bond issuance has ever been looked at. But that's, that's an investment, and I think that the city, if we're looking to grow the infrastr- nobody's gonna build, if the infrastructure is not there, and if the infrastructure costs too much, then it's gonna scare away developers. So the city has to take it upon itself at some point to put that in there first, and then that's how you generate. I mean, you look at our, our park impact fees at the moment are seven thousand dollars per, per dwelling unit. You know, if we have a hundred and twenty, um, you know, or a hundred and sixty unit apartment complex, that's more than a million dollars generated for just that project. And so, but that requires the infrastructure to be put in first, right? So it's the chicken and the egg, so we have to be the catalyst, and right now we're sitting on two point nine million dollars to have that spark. And, and, you know, I think you, you can see where I'm going with this, I think we have to do something with that money and invest to be able to pay for park facilities and not have this shortage of funding all the time. And we're lucky right now that rates, interest rates are, are really low, and so that window's closing. So the longer we wait to make a decision, that window could potentially close with inflation going up and things like that.
And you said we could pursue both, right? We could pursue the park and we can pursue the sewer infrastructure, because we've never had ARPA money like we do, and we've never had park money like we do.
Right.
So we have opportunities on both fronts at this point, it's just a, a matter of bringing those together. And that deadline is, is, is a huge issue.
It is, it is, and um, I, I think, uh, like I said, everything I'm hearing is that the, that the state is seriously, especially with this spike now in Omicron and staff staying home and not being able to move projects forward. We're, we're fairly confident that, that deadline would be extended, but again, it's not something that I would bank on.
And so, did you have?
Well, I, my opinion is, like I say, I'm gonna go, I would rather we do, you know, together, instead of like just everything in one round, because we do need to step by step, yeah, otherwise we're gonna, I hate to go into debt so bad and that we can't come out of this hole, that's what I'm seeing.
And, oh, were you done, sorry. And what I'm, I'm looking at is, um, I'm looking at twenty two point four million dollars in just the projects for the infrastructure, it's twenty two point four. That, the potential for growth there is higher than the sixteen million or the twenty six point two million that we're gonna spend on a park. So for me, I would rather um see how we can um explore a little bit more as far as the financing to, to, to get the infrastructure going, because I've asked other people, I, I mean, I, I've, I've developed friendships with people from Hanford, you know, cause they got Costco, I asked, why did you get Costco? We had infrastructure, they're building a park, how are they building the park? They have the infrastructure, they're able to do it because of the infrastructure, and that's the key word that I keep hearing with everything. You know, developers, I'm working with general contractors, I'm working with developers, and you know, yes, the pricing is increasing, you know, there's, there's not that, um, right now, you know, everything's getting expensive. Everything's costing more nowadays, it could be a month, we could be tripling, you know, some of these costs. But for me, the potential of twenty two point four million or twenty two point zero four million dollars on infrastructure that's gonna give me, give us more money, um, for me is a better route than spending sixteen million or twenty six million and, you know, the park is not gonna give us that, it won't be, there won't be any revenue generated through there. And, you know, yes, we need the park, yes, we need, you know, the green space and, and we need all of that. But I think if we invest in the infrastructure, then it's gonna give us the extra. And who knows, maybe we could build something somewhere else, you know, and, and not have those tobacco restrictions, not have, you know, all these different restrictions. Um, right before the meeting, I drove out there to see what do we need? And not just do we need to open up Stillman, but there's gonna need to have a light on Rose. We're gonna have to also figure out a light on Rose, cause that traffic is horrible trying to get across there. Um, and then over to get across, you know, and I looked and there's no housing out there, there's a lot of land out there. Um, so those are just kind of the things that I just wanted to visually see, you know, because this decision is a very tough decision, because, you know, we, we've heard it in the past that it was, we didn't have the money then, we didn't have the money then. Well, we have a little bit of money now and a potential for a lot more money, and then that little bit of investment that we're gonna take, it's gonna create huge revenues. So um, yes, I would like to do both, but I think for me, I would, I would like to see the growth first and then, you know, um, see how we can develop, because the other thing too is that the other, um, the lift station that would only support that park, well then that's not gonna support the growth that we're gonna wanna go that way. So, you know, all these things are just going through my mind and, and um, it's a tough decision. But yeah, I would, I would like to table it and, and figure out um how we can get this other money.
Can I, I'm, I'm blank, um, Ms. Navarro, are you, are you done? Uh, well, first of all, you know, the, uh, you know, I, I really appreciate the fact that we're actually really having a truthful conversation in regards to, you know, the importance of a park and the importance, the importance of infrastructure. You know, we, we look at what we have around us right now, we have, um, we have Amberwood, Selma Grove, we have, um, you know, um, Stillman Avenue, and these are, these are decisions that we're gonna wanna make right now that are gonna actually fulfill for the future. It's not something that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna invest right now, so you get a bang right now. I cannot believe that we're actually discussing in regards to actually spending sixteen million dollars on a phase one park. And we have four point five at a park that was started discussions in two thousand eight. This is exactly what I'm talking about, two years ago I was sitting here before you guys and you had a hundred and fifty people telling me that we had done a mistake building a to nine or four, twelve million dollar police station. We're what, misusing funds, and we were short changed, and here you are talking about building a sixteen million dollar park when we haven't even built the house. Have you guys looked at the last ten years of what Selma's built? We're lacking homes because we're, we're, our school districts are low in funding because we're lacking homes, people are leaving us Fowler and Kingsburg. Not to mention the fact that we've been so weak with the S K F. S K F has hurt in the city of Selma, we need to take the initiative, we need to build a, get our own engineer. We need to get our own, we need to get our own strategic plan for S K F. We need to have these important decisions that are gonna help us grow for the future. We need to get the Clarkson lift station, we need the Rose lift station, we need to get the infrastructure put down in Selma. I'm not saying we are not good for the development, for the park, but I think a strategic plan that they should have done in two thousand eight, earmark money every year set aside a million, three hundred, a hundred thousand, if you didn't have the money, you still put fifty thousand dollars. By two thousand twenty one, you'd have had a little budget, along with the four point five, you'd have been able to build it. But at the end of the day, exactly the conversation we're having is the reason why we're in this situation, we wanna pass the buck. I believe that we should heavily involve ourselves in infrastructure and have a good mindset, and I don't mind. I'm, like, Mr. Mayor, I've said this before to you, if we can open this dialogue, a discussion where we can sit down and get a crew, a, a full complement of Selma Grove, Amberwood, Rose Lift Stations, Clarkson, the ambulance, the, the um, the fire station, we can talk about all of them, put them all together. The fire station, we can talk about all of them, put them all together. Come up with a unique package that's gonna actual, gonna, you know, include the I Bank, include all the funding sources. But at the end of the day, this becomes a strategic plan to move the city of Selma for a ten to twenty year plan. If we can't do that, then we're just gonna come in here and kind of ramble out of. Sixty million dollar park that's not gonna have all the amenities that people are requiring. I. I, 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 I'm one of the first ones to tell you that I would love to see play, playground and playgrounds that have. For the exception for those kids that need, but we're not gonna be able to fund that because we didn't adequately earmark money or adequately. Talk about how we're gonna fund this. What I'm saying right now is, we can set everything aside, come up with some rough, table it, come up with some rough estimates. But I'm talking, uh, what I'm saying is the Rose Lift Station, Clarkson Lift Station, we need to have the Stillman Avenue project. There's a vision. We all have to have a vision as to how this community is gonna be moved forward. And this is a perfect time because of the state and federal monies and the money we have right now. But we can't just be one sided. We have to work all together and come together and understand numbers. And, 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 and Mr. Manager, we can go back and ask every developer, what is? What's your skin in the game? Everyone has to have skin in the game. When I say skin in the game, what's your investment? Everybody has to have a rate of return. What is your investment for a rate of return? The city of Selma needs to invest to get a rate of return. Our rate of return is gonna become with a per capita income per household, more sales tax. More revenue. But in order for us to do that, we have, we us have to have a really constructive. Discussion in regards to infrastructure, the needs, the fire, everyone. And, and, and we can do this. Cause I, I just heard we can have a loan in about ninety days or six months, right? So I'm just saying, I, I'm not, I'm not saying no to anything, but I wanna, I wanna give some, some history. I can't sit here. I'm, I've been told that I've been misusing funds the last, but two years ago when I built the police station, now you want me to vote for a sixty million dollar park? And we only have four point five million? It's not gonna happen right now. So we need, we need to come to a, we need to do what we supposed to do. Discuss, lottery, and come up with some ideas together. We don't need to point fingers, we don't need to yell each other, we just need to talk to each other and say, hey, this is the betterment for Selma. What are we gonna do for Selma? And I believe that it's gonna start off with all the lift stations. And, and have a good discussion with developers and ask them, what are they willing to invest? Because at the end of the day, they're gonna have to put some money out to. That's all I gotta say, but I, I think we're in a good room to table it, I think, and we can have a good discussion. Thank you.
Hey, well, I guess, you know, we're looking at, I can honestly say two thousand and eight, none of us were here. So we don't know what went on back in two thousand eight. But all, we're, we're, we're here now and we gotta move this city forward. So we need to come up with a good plan and that's gonna be on U C M. You gotta get this to us. We're talking about I Bank, how quickly we can get it, how much can we get? We gotta know what these developers are willing to do. You gotta get an agreement. A letter of agreement, what they're gonna wanna do for the city of Selma. And once we have all that information, I think we can make some solid decisions as to how we can move forward.
Well, correction, I, I, I don't feel that, I don't feel it's on you, the manager. I feel that, I think that you need to come up with a couple of ideas and send them to us. And let us all discuss this and have a meeting, have a workshop and we can actually come to a decision because that's why we're elected to make these kind of decisions. But we also need to have a clear mind that we're not gonna make a vote that's gonna impact this for this year. It's gonna impact this for five, ten, fifteen years. We also need to set some policies. We need to have some meetings with, we need to have some strong meetings with S K F. And we need to let them know that this is where we're at. I understand they're a service company, but we need to set the policies and go back and make sure that policies are being enacted. And go back and see what the fa- last five years, what they've done for us and what they've collected from us and what they've done from us. Because right now, when we start talking about infrastructure, it also has to retain to what they've done and what they've serviced in our community. I only, I, I say this because it's really important to, you, you include this in that discussion. So we can get something in return.
S K F is a part of any discussion about development, certainly, especially when you gave us several items, several lift stations. That need to have their capacity increased and the costs associated with that. It would be a good discussion to ask S K F how much of that would fall under their own O and M budget. As opposed to having Selma foot the bill on that. Because I, I realize, you know, S K F traditionally is. Uh, charged each city, each city's been on its own to put in new infrastructure. But to increase the capacity of lift stations, I don't know if that question has been asked lately as to where that falls.
Okay. If I may, uh, respond to your question, Mayor, um, those are conversations that I've had with S K F over the last couple of months. And I can tell you that. Well, I know the reason, but let me just start off by saying that there are facilities within Selma. That S K F maintains and Clarkson is one of those and Rose Lift Station is one of those that are city owned. And so what that means is that S, uh, S K F is not responsible for upgrading it. They're city owned because they only take in sewage from Selma. Anything else that, that takes sewage from Kingsburg or Fowler that's within the city limits is considered district owned, so S K F owned. And so unfortunately, our planning hasn't been sufficient on the city owned facilities. I mean, we could have probably anticipated that Clarkson was gonna be at capacity at some point, right? It's just that it was, the planning wasn't there. And because it was a city owned facility. Um, and you know, we're, we're up against a bottleneck now because of that. And so the, with the fees that S K F collects, there's R and R rehab and rehabilitation, there's O and M operations and maintenance. Then there, there's the S fund money, which S fund is, uh, the money that they use to rehabilitate Selma infrastructure. Um, and, but for these other lift stations that are city owned, that, that's on us. And, and they will tell you that every, they've told me that ten, ten million times because I've asked them that many times, you know, why have, why can't you guys pay for it? And you know, at the end of the day, developers are, are the ones that normally would pay for it. But when it's such a high cost and we can't offset it with, with any, with development impact fees. Nobody's willing to take that leap first to pay that three million dollars.
That's what it's been. No one has been willing to take that money. So now we have a golden opportunity here with all this money. This American Rescue Plan money, don't know if Build Back Better will be coming. Um, we also have a park grant of four point four million, which we've never had. To adopt this sort of binary approach is short sighted of saying either one or the other, either, you know, we go. For this infrastructure, whatever, you know, that means, that can mean a lot. Um, you even have something in your, in here for human infrastructure, which I really applaud you on, City Manager. Because the human infrastructure of the city has been decimated in the last year. And having something in there in the American Rescue Plan, I think is really important to use those funds for that component as well. Because yeah, you can have all the concrete sewer you want, but if you don't have the people and the heart and the vision and the dreams to carry it forward. It's not gonna happen. You're just gonna have concrete. So, I mean, I think it's really important to look back at Costco. And why we lost that Costco is an example of where we sit tonight. Because we lost the Costco not because of sewer infrastructure. That is erroneous. We lost the Costco because people couldn't get along. Because Consolidated Irrigation District couldn't get along with the city of Selma. And we just went to, we just fought each other. And it became a legal fight. And there was no way that Mr. Cashin was gonna come in and get in the middle of a legal fight. And put a Costco in when he would have gotten dragged into litigation over Sequa. So I think that's an example to us as Councilman, um, Trujillo says. To get our, put our heads together on this rather than bring up the past and point fingers. And while we were saying you're not pointing fingers. Um, I think it's important to genuinely get together and put our heads together, not to make political points. But to move our city forward. And we have an opportunity here, a pivot point. Which is sort of accentuated unfortunately by the, by the time, by the timeline of this park grant. You know, I would, I would be all for. Drawing this out until we have every last dollar to pay for the park, but we just don't have the time for that deadline. And I don't know when, uh, the state's gonna be giving us four and a half million dollars in the future. You know, with the police station, we got four million bucks to build it. And that thinking then was. Well, let's not just take the four million like we always do and just build it with that. Let's, let's master plan this police station. Let's build it. So we have a capacity for the next fifty years. Well, okay, it's a good idea, but four million then became twelve million. And money was just being taken from all different sources. And then when you factor in a project labor agreement that increased costs, it was a bad deal. I think we can again, not point fingers, but learn from that in the park, how not to repeat that event. So I am all for having a meeting, continuing to discuss this, finding our funding sources. But I am not ready to turn my back on eight hundred youths who need to play soccer on the weekends. I'm just not. I, I think we still need to move forward. We need a park after, gosh, twenty, almost thirty-five years of not having any new parks in Selma. We should have required it of developers when they put in their, their subdivisions like every other city, but the city didn't do that. Let's learn from that too. So any kind of agreements that we have with supposedly all these developers are gonna be developing in Selma, right? I'm, I'm waiting. They should have that restriction and requirement where they help us fund all this infrastructure that we're hearing about. I'm not a fan of tabling this tonight, but I understand the necessity of looking for funding sources on this. So if we have to do that, then we have to do that. And do you need a vote? To table this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a, do we, is there a motion to table this item until we have more discussion on funding sources?
I made the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, council. We have a first and second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, and this is not an indefinite tabling. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to, thank you for the, for the spirited discussion, everybody. This is a huge topic for the city. We have someone who wants to weigh in on, on this item. Go ahead.
Well, just two questions to consider, uh, for me to consider as following up. Um, if you guys do get the loan, uh, what, will you guys have, uh, the payment amount? And where will that revenue be generated from? And we all know, uh, I have a personal interest in the park, right? And really vested in that, wanna see an all inclusive, but I also agree, I want us to do it right. And I'm here and interested for the betterment of Selma in the long run, right? We all are. And but so my first question is, how will that, you know, how will we make those payments if we get the loan? And secondly, um, maybe part, plan B in the meantime. Is there, are there funds available to, um, better the parks that we have now? You know, a lot of them are in really bad shape. And maybe that'll appease some of us in the meantime to get some nice safe. Players for the children. Um, so those two questions, I don't know if those could be answered now or in the future. But something to consider.
Sure. Mayor, would you like me to respond to?
Sure, if you wanna address those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sanz. Uh, in regard to your question about how the loan would potentially be paid. So they would look at our general fund revenues, which is made up of property taxes and sales taxes. Um, to see whether it, over the thirty years, we would be able to support the debt service. The other, um, option is, so assuming that we're able to get additional housing development. Those developers pay impact fees, including park fees. So we could use, collect those fees. To make the payment on the debt that was used to build the park. Yeah, it would be contingent on development, but we would have to ensure that if no development ever happens, because that's a risk, right? That our general fund could still support that, those debt payments.
If we table or, you know, the development of, of this. Are there funds there to help make the parks that we do have now?
Yes, we have, uh, close to, I, I think, close to seven hundred thousand dollars that we collected in development impact fees that could be used. They have to have been projects that were listed in the, in the Nexus study when we adopted the impact fees. But certainly, um, we can use those for, for some park improvement projects.
Thank you. Forgive me if I'm wrong, City Manager, but I also believe you brought up a potential funding source for paying the stroke on the loan. And by the way, that loan from I Bank would not just pay for a park for soccer players. It would also pay for badly needed infrastructure. Like sewer and these lift stations. I believe you mentioned that the pension obligation bond was a potential for making that monthly stroke or yearly.
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding me. So the city is currently looking, and, um, and this will come before the council on the January eighteenth meeting. At moving forward with, uh, pension obligation bonds, which, um, is basically us paying our debt to Calpers. On our pension, on our unfunded liabilities at a lower interest rate than what we would otherwise pay. Which the projections from our financial advisors is that it would save us between three hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred thousand a year. Which that money that we're saving, we could apply towards debt service or, or other projects.
Director Kirshner?
I just wanna mention that the T O T, the transit occupancy tax, you also put fifty percent. We have a little less than three hundred thousand dollars. And that has a lot less ties to it than the park development. That's something the city council approved. That just states any of park.
Thank you for that. Thanks for that information.
Three hundred thousand. Good.
Now, at this point, if we don't have any more input, did we wanna consider a time and a day, day and time for the, to get together? For our next discussion, we have a city council meeting a week from tonight at six o'clock. So after that, at some point, would we be looking for a, a meeting?
Yes, and I would just say, sorry, um, I am gonna be at the Cal Cities, uh, City Managers Conference, um, from the second to the fourth. But I would be able to join remotely if the council is okay with that, or we can schedule something, um, for a different week.
Will that give you enough time early February to line up these options with funding sources like I Bank? Will you know, will you know a little bit better by that time? That's about, um, roughly a month from now.
I, I think that we would have a better idea at that point whether I Bank, uh, would be willing to fund the project, um, by the first week of February. But I can, I had our finance director follow up with I Bank today on the status of that review. So if, once I get a response, I will let you know. But I think that should be enough time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, Fernando, could we, uh, could we get to a point where, when we come back or before prior to us getting, getting together? I know, I understand we have more, our, our funding sources will be in the ARPA and, um, you said Cal, the infrastructure law revolving. Can we get some information on all those? And at the same time, I would love to have some information in regards to. I know you had it, I know you, you, you're gonna email us that, 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 uh, the Selma Grove, Amberwood, uh, Rose Lift Station, Clarkson. Um, what the actual cost of every, um, the lift stations, what the cost is and what Amberwood. Would, what's, what they're involved in, I think, as you said, six billion or eight billion and what, uh, what the KB Homes, what the sewer line would cost. And is there, is it possible that you could give us that information, what the cost is plus? You know, initially, I, I understand people have, you know, they're talking about, uh, doing some kind of a, a block grant or, or, I think you use the word, um. Where they're doing, where they're doing some kind of funding, where they're gonna block, uh, that area and I guess, um. Take it out to the voters. But could you go back and find out what, how much money they would be willing to invest? So we could know, I'm, I'm more looking at, you know, every, getting, if we're gonna fund one, that's fund, fund them all proportion. To get them to see that we're, we as a city are invested. Could you get an amount of what every individual's looking at?
Absolutely. I think, um, that would, that would be part of the discussion that we have with developers. I mean, figuring out kind of what the, the scope of their projects, because it would depend on how many homes each project is building, right? To, to calculate their share of it. Um, but as far as the, um. You know, the, the I Bank info, I can send that out, the ARPA, and then, um. Where you talked about the cost estimates for these projects, these are, these estimates are actual, um. Firm, actually the KB Homes is actually, the, the estimate that I provided for that was based on an actual bid for the Dinuba Line. And then the Amberwood estimate that I provided was also based on the most recent bid. So those are hard numbers. The, uh, Clarkson Lift Station, that was a, uh, estimate. And it was a very conservative estimate that was put together by S K F. Um, for two point nine million dollars and that assumes prevailing wage. Uh, but those are, those are very, uh, the, the best estimates that we have at the moment.
And you're gonna email that to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then last, um, is there any way that we could get, um. So we're not gonna be able to get them to meet before we have.
so we're not gonna be able to get them to meet before we have our meeting, correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Councilman?
There's no way we'll have the developers meet prior to us meeting, no, huh?
No, I, I think it would be, it's too late notice at the moment.
Okay, okay.
I, I agree, I think it's really important to make this meeting as timely as possible, so we can stay on track with, with the park and with all these infrastructure issues we're considering. With that being said, our first council meeting in February will be the seventh, we could meet the fourth on Friday, February four, well, you're gonna be in your, at your meeting, or we can meet that week on the eleventh. Would that give you enough time to corral the developers and corral the information from the I Bank?
Absolutely.
Okay, so how about Friday, the eleventh? All right, can you, can you be there?
Do we do it in daytime?
Okay, oh, four, oh, shoot, he's gonna be at his. Is everybody good with February eleventh at five P M, I know it's a Friday?
Oh.
I know, you got your restaurant.
I, I won't be here, the eleventh through the fourteenth.
Okay.
How about Thursday? Or the ninth?
Wednesday, Wednesday the night, that's two days after our council meeting, is everybody okay with that? Okay. Okay, Wednesday the night, that, do we need to do it at five or, okay, five o'clock? Everybody good with that? Okay. And specifically, what's the scope of this meeting gonna be, City Manager?
We would be looking at, um, the, the scope of the projects, the sewer infrastructure projects that need to be funded, as well as public facilities projects, um, and identifying the developers', um, I guess, investment, the, the, their willingness to make an investment, um, as Councilman Trujillo said, you know, what their skin in the game is. If, if the city is gonna make this investment, what are they gonna put in as well?
Okay.
Um, and then really start the discussion, I plan to have one of our strategic advisor, uh, consultants, um, we're having a conversation with, with this gentleman who's a former, um, Deputy Director of the Department of Treasury for the state, who, um, is very well versed on developing master plans and then helping to get them funded. So we'll have, um, some information from him, and then we also have, um, you know, our, um, Government Affairs Consultant. So we'll have pretty much everybody that's involved in, in infrastructure and public facility development.
You have a really good roundtable, sounds good. And with that, we have no, unless we have any other comments? Anybody on the line?
As a reminder to the caller online, please use your raise your hand feature, and we will add you to the meeting queue. Mayor Robertson, I have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, with that, I will call for adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.